Good evening and welcome to the November 4, 2015 meeting of the Milton School Committee. Before we begin, please join us as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we begin, I just want to acknowledge our freshman representative to the school committee is here. Janelle DeScoppins is here for the first time, so welcome, Janelle. And as we've told, tried to tell all of our student government representatives, please be sure to speak up, ask questions, make comments at any time, just wave and I'll acknowledge you and talk into the microphone. We also have filling in tonight for Audie Erickson, our senior representative, Kate Driscoll, who's here tonight, so welcome, Kate. And one other, one of our members is actually at the Massachusetts Association of School Committees Conference, Becky Cadera, Vice Chair, so she is not with us tonight, but I think we're otherwise well represented. With respect to the agenda, just a couple of revisions. We're going to delete, under the Finance Subcommittee, we're going to delete Subpart A, the Revised Capital Plan, and move up the First Quarter Report to A, and then approval of vendor warrants will be B. And then, under Executive Session, we're going to delete and AFSMI. There won't be any issues discussed about AFSMI this evening. Those are the changes to the agenda without objection. We'll approve the agenda. Next, we go to Citizen Speak. Mara, do we have anyone for Citizen Speak? Oh, one of our representatives is here. Our junior representative to the school committee from the Student Government, Michael Sullivan, will now address us on his flag retirement project. Michael Sullivan, right there at the table, make sure to speak into the microphone so everyone can hear you.
Good evening. My name is Michael Sullivan, and I'm a junior at Milton High, and I'm also volunteer tour guide at Ford Independence on Castle Island in South Boston. As some of you may know, I am leading a flag retirement project. I have set up bins in every Milton Public School and Town Hall to collect unserviceable flags. My goal is to bring awareness to my generation on how to properly dispose of a flag. The American flag for me stands for more than just an object. It symbolizes over 200 years of history, and it is what brings us together as a nation today. Men and women have sacrificed on our lands and overseas for the meaning of this flag. I participated in last June's Flag Day Retirement Ceremony at Ford Independence. The next one is on Veterans Day at 10:00 a.m., and that is why I'm collecting flags across town. Obviously, we are a very patriotic town, and you don't need to travel far to see an American flag in Milton. I am happy to do this project because it combines our appreciation for our veterans with a chance to properly dispose of a flag that's been formed proudly. Bins will be available through November 9th, or if anyone has a problem with dropping off a flag or question about this project, they can email me at MiltonFlagRetirement@gmail.com. I do plan on doing this next year, and thank you for your time. I'd also like to thank Superintendent Gormly and all the Milton Public School Principals for their support.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Does anyone have any questions for Michael? Mr. Walker.
Mr. Sullivan, we don't normally respond during Citizen Speak, but I would just say, I emphatically agree that this is a great project for your generation and for mine and every other generation, so thanks for doing it.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure we have the email contact for you correct. It's MiltonFlagRetirement@gmail.com?
Yes.
So it's MiltonFlagRetirement@gmail.com, and I'm sure Michael will get right back to you.
And Michael Sullivan's project is also on the front of the Milton website. If anybody wants the contact information, or they can call Central, it will connect them with Michael. And the bins in the front of each school or in the lobby are brimming over with flags, so congratulations and thank you, we're very, very proud of you.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
So, we have a packed agenda this evening, both in regular and executive session, so we will move as quickly as possible right into it and right into the superintendent's report. Ms. Gormly.
Thank you, Chairman Zulus. I'd like to invite to the table the Glover Site Council, under the leadership of Dr. Sheila Cuxtis. If you would come up and join us, and Dr. Cuxtis, if you'd make introductions. Welcome. And the school committee members have the presentation in their packets and the Glover Improvement. So you can take that right out of the holder and pass it.
I first want to thank the school committee for giving the Glover Site Council the opportunity to come in tonight and share the work that we've been doing on our school improvement plan, the work that we plan on doing in the next year and the years to go. Tonight, we're going to be talking a little bit about the goals that we have, the strategies that we put in place, and some of the activities that we have put in place already and plan to put in place this year that support the goals and the strategies. So I'm going to start.
Do you want to do that for her, the PowerPoint?
The one on the right.
So Glover School Site Council is made up of three of our faculty members, Mrs. Margaret Turner, who is here this evening, Mrs. Allison White, and Mrs. Janice Powell. Mrs. Allison White is brand-new to our Glover School Site Council, so we welcome her this year as a new member. We have three parents, Mrs. Adrian Sullivan, and yes, we are fortunate enough to have Michael Sullivan's mother with us this evening too, Mr. James Sulpelsa, and a new member of our Site Council, Mr. Kevin Fleming, who is a kindergarten parent. So we welcome them, and we're very, very grateful to have them here. Glover Site Council always works together. Thank you, James. At the Glover School, there's a commitment to academic excellence and high standards for administrators, teachers, and students. As a Glover community, we strive to provide a strong academic foundation and a love of learning in a safe, secure, and stimulating environment that values individual differences. Tonight, what we'll be looking at are the three goals that we have for our school improvement plan. The first goal focuses on academics, the second goal on school climate, and the third goal on 21st century skills. This evening, for each of those goals, we'll look at the goal, we'll look at the strategies that we put in place to support that goal, and then the activities that we have in place for that. I will start with Goal One, and then I'll move the mic over to Adrian Sullivan, who will go with Goal Two. Goal One is an academic focus. Our goal at Glover School is to work collaboratively, all the faculty, using the best practices, both qualitative and quantitative assessments, to support each and every student to achieve to his or her highest potential. This will be included, but not limited to, increasing the number of students scoring in the proficient and advanced categories, which will now be levels four and five on the park. So when we're looking at this moving forward, there'll be levels four and five on state assessments by 10% from 2014 to 2017, especially with a focus in the high needs, which are the low-income, the ELL, and the economically, excuse me, and the students with disabilities, those subgroups. We will also support early literacy goals in kindergarten to grade three by increasing the number of students who move from scoring below benchmark in September to at or above benchmark at the end of the year by 10% each school year. So when we look at these, we look at the strategies, and we have four strategies to achieve Goal One. The first strategy talks about ongoing professional development and collaborative grade and school-level work that will best support these practices in identifying the students that need this help, and then addressing those needs with those students. There'll be two ways we're doing this. One is that we're going to be introducing grades, two, three, and five this year, the new FOS Science Curriculum Units, and in grade four, the STEM will be the project lead this way. These were both advancement initiatives. We also will be using the Reading Coach to support grades five and kindergarten, another advancement initiative. The second strategy will talk about common planning time, how we use the common planning time with faculty to reflect, to discuss, to assess how to best address student needs and identified student achievement gaps. We have built into the contract the common planning time of every other week that the teachers on grade levels meet, but that by no means is the only time that they do meet. They're meeting before school, they're meeting after school, they're meeting at lunch, they're meeting in the hallways to talk about all of these things. So this is something that's woven right through every single day. The third strategy is the ongoing reviewment of the assessment data that will be conducted to determine the effectiveness of instructional practices. We'll be implementing the new science benchmark assessments this year. We're going to be using benchmark assessments such as the Fountas and Pennell, which you'll see in the next slides called F&amp;Ps, and the Scholastic Reading Inventory, which will be for grades four and five, Fountas and Pennell grades one, two, and three. Using those literacy assessments, as well as the everyday math for benchmark and unit assessments to help drive instruction. Again, this is part of the advancement initiative. The fourth strategy that we use here for Goal One are enrichment activities, as well as targeted student support sessions that will be planned to extend learning and address remediation of achievement gaps. We're doing this to increase, and/or modify, targeted support for students, especially students in the high-needs subgroup. We're using reading specialists and having them doing targeted instruction for those students we've identified, using the F&amp;Ps and the SRAs for extra help, and the extended day programs, including the new one this year from Tufts, which is RAVO. Beyond that, the extended day programs will be programs such as either before-school or after-school programs with targeted instruction for students. So what do we use to find out how well we're doing? Well, we use the data. We don't have Park data to share with you right now, but we do have the science MCAS results for Glover. When we look at Glover this year, we look at, we have a concern about the number of advanced and proficient that dropped this year. When you see that purple line, we went down this year in the number of advanced and proficient. That's something we want to address, and we want to find out, where did this happen? Was it a subgroup, and how do we address this? So when we look at closing the achievement gaps among those subgroups, we see that the students with disabilities versus non-disabled students, where that achievement gap went up most this year. All went up, but the one in students with disabilities versus non-disabilities is really where we see that grew this year in science. When we look at Glover in particular, we see something pretty shocking, and this really, really concerned all of us when we got this. In 2014, the number of advanced, excuse me, the percentage of advanced and proficient students with high needs, those ELL, the students with disabilities, and low-income, the number of students in advanced, excuse me, the percentage in advanced and proficient was 67% of those students scored in advanced and proficient. This year, only 17% of those high-needs scored in advanced and proficient. We're looking very closely at individual students. What can we do? How do we target our instruction to make sure that we are addressing that? When we look at those students that are not high-needs, we see that in 2014, non-high-needs students, 71% of them scored in advanced and proficient. This year, 77% of those. So not only do we see the high-needs group going down, but we see the non-high-needs going up, thereby even stretching that gap even further. We know that our work is around high-needs students. When we look at the literacy benchmark assessments, these are those F&amp;Ps I was talking about. In grades one, two, and three, the F&amp;Ps are given throughout the year. This was September of this year. These are students that are in the English Innovation Pathway Program. Grade three will be given very soon, and those numbers will then be put into the grade three. For grades one and two are English Innovation Pathway students. When we look at this, and we see in grade one, 29% of our students are below benchmark, two or more benchmarks. We look at that, and we think, again, how are we going to address this? Grade two, you see it's dropped sharply, and grade three, again, it's 10%. So when I take that and I look at it and I think, okay, grade one, you were scoring that, what am I going to expect as the year progresses? So I look at last year and say, how did this play out last year? Last year in September, the number, the percentage of grade one students who scored two or more benchmarks below was even greater, it was 32%. But as we look over the course of last year, that number dropped from 32% scoring two or more benchmarks below to 20%, then down to 7% at the end of the year. That's a really good news story. And when we look at that, we look at 88% of our students on or above benchmark by the end of the year, as opposed to, from the beginning of the year, 62% on or above. When I look at grade two, we see that at the beginning of grade two, we don't have as many students that are two or more benchmarks below. We wouldn't expect, because we've done such a good job in grade one at addressing those needs. So they started 15%, this was last year. By mid-year, we still had 15%, but what we had done is we had moved the numbers of students from one benchmark below up into on-benchmark. So you see that from the yellow 10% to the green 10%. So those students were moving up, and by the end of the year, that on-benchmark had moved up to 17%, so that we had by the end of the year, 78% of our students reading on or above benchmark. In grade three, we did not give in last year a September F&amp;P to grade three, but you see, again, the same type of thing, and we had 9% in the winter reading two or more below benchmark, with 7% in the spring, but those on or above benchmark up to 89%, so close to 90% of our students reading on or benchmark by the end of grade three. So with that in mind, what are some of the activities, what are some of the things that we're doing that focus on academics? We have First Lego League. This is our second year of First Lego League. Musical Theater Math League for grades four and five. We have a grade four book club that'll start in January. We do the Library Book Swap. Junior Achievement in a Day. Museum of Science Presentations, the expansion of the STEM Learning Experiences, Extended Day Support, and the Outdoor Classroom. This is the year two of that rollout as well. So those are some of those activities that will have the focus on our academics. This time, I'm going to pass the mic over to Adrian Sullivan, who's going to talk a little bit about Goal Two and the school culture.
Thank you. So for Goal Two, it focuses around school culture, and the goal is that Glover School will work to increase the number and types of opportunities for family and community engagement in the life of the school that contribute to creating a positive, welcoming, and proactive school culture. We will do this by assessing and identifying the family and community needs through the PTO Site Council, Diversity Committee, the care team, and developing at least one additional activity each year based on the information gleaned. So now we're in year two of our Site Council Improvement Plan, and with that comes a survey that will be released in spring of 2016 to really assess progress and needs that still need to be addressed. So when we talk about progress and needs, obviously, you don't need to tell the school committee, you spend hours and hours and hours on the progress and the needs of K-12 in Milton. As a Glover parent for 10 years, and on the Site Council for four years, the progress has been phenomenal, and that is related to the fact of the school committee's support and also administrative support. And when we talk about the advancement budget and all of the things, you can actually see it all come into fruition even just the past four years. And so the future is very bright, there's still a lot of work to be done, but at the same time, there's a lot of data that's already been mined, there's a lot of information that's available, and this year, the focus will be to go out to, back out to the parents, back out to the students, and say, where can we improve? What resources do we need? What's working? That type of thing. So that's the plan for improving school culture, and there are seven strategies related to that. So the first strategy is really kind of folds right into Goal One, and that is working with the community, the newly hired family liaison person who's met with the school council last year, and her work's really coming to fruition this year as well. So we're understanding the diversity and background of all the families, what's going on at home that impacts the learning environment at school, and increasing and learning the number of activities that just demonstrate that stakeholders' diversity and background. So you'll see just today, in today's presentation, is that list of things that do reflect the diversity and background that occurs in Milton Public Schools. So for Glover, Strategy 2.2, it's working to build a culture of equity and inclusiveness, and that's done through the physical appearance of the school, so everybody feels welcome, they can recognize in the billboards, and in the classrooms, and in the libraries, and displays reflective of their abilities, their family culture, their family structure, and so on. Strategy Three, working very closely with the district, Glover School is offering faculty professional development on the topic of cultural competency. Strategy 2.4, identifying and implementing strategies and programming to support the range of learners in the classroom, and that goes hand-in-hand with Goal One and all the detail and the drilling into information of what's really going on for each and every student at Glover, and each and every ability at Glover. Strategy 2.5, communication. This is really about communication and regular communication. Dr. Cuxtis has implemented this year, her blog, so instead of waiting every couple of weeks to get all the information at once, she kind of does the email blast of what's going on, works very closely with the PTO as well, so there's plenty of information and in a timely manner gets to everybody. And Glover School will work to create partnerships with community members and members. 2.7, Glover will implement a social and emotional curriculum, also working with administration across the other elementary schools as well. So in terms of the school climate focus, these are just a handful of the activities. The First Lego League, I just happen to be a coach, so I can speak very in-depth about putting the Legos together and losing pieces, that's not fun, but you have very capable fifth graders finding them under doors and in door jams and so on, so we've got our Lego built. And when we talk about school climate, when you think about the Lego League is a perfect example, because we have our Milton High School Robotics Team helping us out. So they are mentoring our 10-year-olds, and it's fantastic, and it's awesome to watch them, because there's so many in the robotics team, and there's about eight of the fifth graders, and they actually get one-on-one interaction, and it's pretty cool, and it works both ways for both, because you get to see the high schoolers be the leaders and be in charge, and they know more than we do. Because we were doing something, and they said, well, don't you have iPads? Like, oh, yeah, we do, we have a lot of iPads. Well, don't you have Chromebooks? Yeah, we have a lot of Chromebooks. Well, why aren't you using them? So they kind of developed what we need to be using, so it's great, and it saves us a lot of time. So that's just kind of, you know, some of the positive things that, when you think about the real day-to-day thing of, you know, where the MFE money is coming from and all that, you actually see it hit the ground running in the classrooms before and after school as well. Obviously, Musical Theater, we do have Math League. On Friday, the Veterans Day activity is a flag garden, so all of the students have brought home their list of veterans that they want to celebrate, and they'll write it on the flag, and if you drive by Glover by the end of the day on Friday, you'll see the whole front of Glover covered with flags in recognition of any veteran that's been special to anybody in the Glover family. There's the Winter Traditions Family Quilt Box, which is the early morning Reebok activity, which is very, very popular, huge waiting list, it's a lottery to get in. Outdoor Classroom, which I believe you have some of the curriculum, copy of the curriculum. So the Outdoor Classroom is also parent-driven, and the fourth and third graders, and they all get to actually have a class outside, and it's great, and they have to be careful not to tread on where the ducks are, so, or the mama duck will never come back, so, which is very cool, and a couple of times, they got to see the duck laying her eggs and watching it. It's very, very cool, and actually, that's a picture of the duck cam with, you actually could see the ducks waddle out for the first time, one of the parents set that up. And we have an amazing list, obviously, grade four Book Swap. Grade four last year did a whole Grade Four Science Day, so they had science stations, and then the following day, they all gave their presentations on specific science topics, and really amazing presentations. The work that they're doing and the collaborative work as teams, even ninth graders is amazing. For December 3rd, January 7th, and February 25th, there is disability grade level presentation setup. Family Diversity Night is happening March 9th. Junior Achievement in a Day is usually then the end of May. Sports Night culminates in the fields for all from K through five at the end of school year, and then there's the end of the school year, Family Picnic. So the dance card is very full at Glover, there's a lot going on, and I'm going to pass it on to Jimmy Sapelsa, who's going to do Goal Three.
Thank you for having us. My name is Jimmy Sapelsa. I have a sixth grader at Pierce and a second grader in the French program at Glover, and as a parent and Site Council member, I'm thrilled with the services that this town provides me, and look for ways to give back, as many of us do, to this great town. So Goal Three is really around 21st century skills and technology, and what that means, introducing technology across the board, and thinking about how our young learners are really learning differently. Recognizing our students live in a digital world, Glover School will support students' acquisition of skills that build proficiency, fluency in the 21st century, social and literary skills, increasing the number of opportunities for students to use and apply digital applications both in and beyond the school day. In addition, we will work with the district's Educational Technology Director and elementary technology teachers to develop a rubric that will assess students' digital literacy by grade level two, by grade level two times a year. So there's four strategies that we have outlined, some of them were already in process. Number one is to allow equitable access to quality learning tools and technologies that we have and resources throughout the school. Number two is to utilize rubrics in class to provide feedback to students on their creativity, collaboration, critical thinking, and communication, to coach students on ways to develop and improve these skills. Number three is to support learning opportunities that extend beyond the regular school day, both before school and after school. And strategy number four is to allow the library space, which is wonderful at Glover, to become a better-used media center where students and adults and teachers can gather, read, reflect, create, collaborate, and plan for the library to become more accessible and more of a resource for our community. We've talked about several of these already, so I won't go into detail, but, you know, these are all things that kind of also fall into 21st century skills focus. You know, a couple of things that weren't mentioned earlier, Museum of Science Presentation and the expansion of the STEM Learning Experience Fourth Grade Project. And now I'll hand it over to Allison White.
Okay, so looking ahead this year, from September until the end of the year, just month by month, we have the First Lego League, this is the second year of the First Lego League, which is happening from September to December. We also have Musical Theater happening from October through December. Math Leaks for grade four and five, October through May. Veterans Day Flag, which we talked about earlier, Adrian referred to, which is Friday, so drive by absolutely to check that out. Winter Traditions Family Quilts, we have happening in November and December, and Disability Awareness Presentations, December, January, and February this year. Grade Four Book Club with Milton Public Librarian Sarah Trog, January through February this year. We also have the Library Book Swap happening in February. Family Diversity Night happening in March this year. Junior Achievement, Jay in a Day, very popular, that's happening in May this year. Junior Achievement, J in a Day, very popular, that's happening in May this year. Sports Night, May and June as well, and End of School Year Family Picnic happening in June. Okay, we have the Museum of Science Presentations happening, we have Box, the expansion of STEM Learning Experiences with the Grade 4 Project Lead the Way, the Outdoor Classroom Curriculum, the second year it's being rolled out, and the establishment of new Glover Care, the Care Team.
What's the Care Team?
Who's the care team?
Oh, thank you. So our next steps, I don't know if you all know, but we do meet once a month, we're going to reflect on the following. I'm going to review the processes of each of the three goals, we're going to evaluate the process and the outcome benchmarks, we're going to analyze new data as it applies to the plan, we're going to celebrate the successes and also learn from the challenges. And also, we're going to recognize the school improvement plan is a living document, and update and adjust as necessary. Thank you all. If you have any questions?
Well, let me just say that Mr. Sapelsa talked about giving back, and this presentation shows that all of you working together, the principal, the educators, and the parents, this shows an extensive amount of work and interest and passion and involvement, and it's much appreciated on our behalf. And so, I don't know if anybody has any questions? Ms. Rella?
Can you explain what the Care Team is? I've never heard of that at an elementary, so.
So this came out this year. As a group, a few of the faculty came and said, you know, Sheila, we'd like to really look at some things that might happen around the school and develop protocols. This came because one of, one day, one of our children left the cafeteria and we couldn't find this child. And we thought, where is she? We looked in bathrooms, we looked here, and we realized, we don't have a step-by-step, what do you do? So we had some staff members in one place, some staff members in another, and we thought we really need to develop protocols around some things that would happen in school. So for example, you know, as I said, somebody said, "I'm heading to the boys' room," and then five minutes later, we can't find them. What do we do? A bolting student. It doesn't happen that often, but once in a while, you have a student who will run, and you want to know, how do we handle this? What do we do? So there are a set of, we got together and we brainstormed some things that might happen in a school that we would really like a set of protocols for so that everybody knows that. And as a team, then we got together and we said, here are those protocols, who would be the resources, who would be the people that we would need to call upon for those types of protocols, and then what would literally protocols be? First, we would do this. Second, we would do this. When do we call 911? When is there that kind of an emergency? Those are the types of things that we looked at, and we're developing right now a pamphlet that will go out to all the teachers. And again, this is something that will live and grow as other things come, but we felt like we really wanted to get that put in place, specific for Glover School.
Thank you.
Ms. Bagley Jones?
I had a couple of questions, but I can just do one or two if other people have questions, but. On the Care Team, so is that something that's done across the district? Should it be, should it be policy, Kevin?
It takes different forms in different schools.
It would be different forms because even the schools look different. So in other words, for Glover, we have four or five different doors. Let's say we had a student that we, for some reason, couldn't find. We would, then, all of the different members would go to a different door, we would have a protocol that would go right down. We have language that Mrs. Doyle, the administrative assistant, would be saying over the loudspeaker that would let us know without, you know, alarming anyone that we need to go someplace. So it's those types of things.
Okay. So each school would have?
In different formats.
Yeah. Okay, I just hadn't heard of it before.
So although we all knew that we were going to be doing something, we found that not everyone knew, especially you have new staff in there, it wasn't written down in a step-by-step way, so we felt this is really very good to have this for everyone.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I don't want to.
Hugh? I have, I have one question, a couple of comments, but I'm happy to, you're welcome to finish if you'd like.
Why don't you go ahead, Kevin?
Sure. All right. So my question was, first of all, excellent presentation, thank you very much, and thank you for the time and effort that went into it. I wondered if you had given any thought to sort of building on the horizontal team planning integration that you do in common planning time at the beginning and the end of the year, when one grade cohort of teachers is handing off a cohort of students to another set of teachers, discussing strategies that worked with that cohort of students and that teachers may want to employ going forward.
That's an excellent question, and I will hand it over to Mrs. White because they do do that type of thing, and we build that in starting in May.
Yes, as a co-taught teacher, we always have meetings at the end of the year and again in September, right when the school year starts, to prep, I would prep the 2nd grade teachers, I'm a 3rd grade teacher, and I also meet with the 4th grade teachers to let them know who's coming into their classroom and different, you know, strategies that we've used that have helped the kids. And the 2nd grade would prep the 3rd grade teachers as well on the students.
Excellent, good. Round robin, we can come back to you.
Is that only for the co-taught classes?
No, that's all the classes.
All right.
So we have, at our May faculty meeting, we spend a lot of time looking at that, so the teachers will start to think about what will the classes look for next year, what are the mixture of students? So we do a lot of work around that, and so the teachers then talk to each other between grade levels, so first to, so kindergarten to first, first to second, because the kindergarten teachers really are the best judge of those first-grade students and where will they work. Sometimes we know that two students might not work as well together as two others, so we want to keep those two students maybe in two different classrooms. Or there might be a lot of things that, you know, you just want to give the next year's teacher a heads up on. So we start working on that in May, it continues into June.
Okay, thank you.
Another one?
So the testing, you know, obviously, as Kevin said, a lot of effort went into this, and it's much appreciated, and a lot of great information and data and test scores. I'm assuming you would agree that the test scores in science are fairly chilling.
They are fairly chilling in the high-needs subgroup.
Right.
Right.
But as you eloquently pointed out, the high-needs subgroup, the widening achievement gap between the two is what really stands out to me. Every, it's the huge, the gap, it's just, so I'm assuming that's a priority, I'm assuming you're getting a good handle on what's happening with that, why that happens.
So that is a priority for us, and as you said, the non-high-needs group grew where the high-needs group fell, so that even made that gap wider.
Right.
So we look at that. Unfortunately, we don't have growth percentiles for that group because we have them in Grade 5 as a cohort, and then they're in Pierce the next year. So we can't look at, okay, did that work? You know, was this a cohort of students? We look at individual students and say, what did we do here? Did we do enough? But when we look at that and say, yes, this is a high-needs group that really, really sticks out here as those that need more support, the teacher goals this year in Grade 5 are all surrounding that.
Okay.
So we looked at, as soon as we were able to get into that information and delve into it, we started right in working with that. But not only is it Grade 5, because Grade 5 science is a reflection of Grade 3 and 4 science, we then had to go back to Grade 3 and 4. So with Bernadette Moonin, we started looking at, how do we start building in Grade 3 and 4 for success in Grade 5?
Okay, thank you. And then my other question or comment was around your social-emotional curriculum, and what do you, do you know what you're going to be using, and what are your thoughts about how you're going to incorporate that? It's going to look at inclusionary issues in terms of your French and English kids, as well as your children with special challenges, in any format, and I'm just curious as to how, especially the teachers and the parents would, well, especially the teachers, I guess, would think about how that's going to be utilized.
So I know that district-wide, there's been a group that's done a lot of work with that, and Brian Powers, who's our Adjustment Counselor, sits on that group. So I believe that there is going to be a curriculum that will be rolled out across all four elementary schools. And so that's going to establish, obviously, common language, common practice. So what we will then be doing is be building that in to make sure that our teachers have had enough professional development, feel very good about it, and that is rolled out across the school.
So there isn't a social-emotional emphasis yet, it's when we roll out with Assistant Superintendent?
Yes.
That we've talked about, I know about that.
Yes.
Will be happening, but there isn't much doing, going on there now? I see some.
Anti-bullying curriculum.
Yeah, what?
So we have, I mean, we do have, and it's not really the social-emotional, but we have the bully-proof your school curriculum that's in place. That's actually being put in place, we had the introduction to that in the October Staff Meeting, and the teachers, I believe it's next week, so we have, it's like a week-long curriculum. We look at putting that across the school, establishing that at the same time. So that's really where the foundation gets laid, and then the teachers move from that and integrate that throughout the school year.
Thank you.
Mr. Walker?
So thanks for a great presentation. I'm a big fan of presentations that are clear and concise, and this was that. My question is, what have you learned? Some of you have been at this for more than a year. As you set out to accomplish each of these goals, what kinds of challenges and problems have you encountered? That's the first part of the question. And the second part is, are there areas where you feel like you could benefit from different resources or more resources? And I'd like to hear from the teacher representatives and the parent representatives.
Would you like to start?
I think one of the, the big challenges when you're starting a new program, just getting everybody on the same page, and as we had talked about earlier today, was that we have to develop a vocabulary that's the same in every classroom with all the teachers and the children, so it is a school-wide, system-wide program, and you can't just put it in, in a week or two. It's going to take a while, but we have to all get on the same page, and I say, you deal with, we have to meet and talk about the common problems we have, the instances that we run into, and how we are going to deal with that. And as Sheila said, Dr. Kuxtes said, there's vocabulary that we have to use, and we have to be using it throughout, throughout the school, we have to be using it in the cafeteria, out on the playground, in lineup in the morning, dismissal in the afternoon, in the everyday classroom, in the cafeteria, in gym class and everything. So that's going to take a while, but we all, all see that there's a need for it, and we will all be on board for it, but it's, it's not going to happen overnight, but it is a work in, a work in progress, which I think will benefit everybody. You know, just make everyone, the boys and girls, no matter what class they're in or what hallway they're in, they will know what the expectations are, and it's not going to be one that's going to be, you know, punitive or anything like that, it's just going to be the, the feeling of the building and that the expectations are. And as I said, when we're all on the same page, it's going to work well, because you can go into three different rooms and get three different types of classroom management, and so that would mean, you know, someone learns one program one year one way, and then they go into another teacher another year, and it's a whole new program, so the consistency would be beneficial for everybody. And I think that could also carry over to at home, and if they know, you know, there's that vocabulary, it can be used at home and in school and be helpful.
Would you like to hear from the parents?
I would.
Yeah, I would say one ongoing challenge that parents, I think, struggle with in general is, is communication. It's something that I think people, you know, in today's day and age, communicate, you know, is a choice, how, how you take in your information, right? It goes from emails to texting to snail mail to flyers, and, and I know we've adjusted a lot of the messages through the, through the years, really, as far as both not only the PTO, but Dr. Kuxtes in whether, you know, doing a monthly newsletter and, you know, and really learning from the parents and site council and others as to, you know, whether once a week or once, twice a week, little snippets are better than, you know, a, you know, a commitment of seven minutes to read versus a commitment to 30 seconds to read, and, and learning really how people communicate. And, and I think we've, actually, Dr. Kuxtes really has done a really good job of adjusting to, to that, and I think just fixing communication, improving communication does a lot for, I think, how people feel about the school and how, whether they feel that they're connected and know what's going on, and whether someone says, oh, did you, you know, see what's going on, or did you hear this? I think just better communication really ties the community better, in together better, that it, you know, I think it's something that, it's constantly a work in progress, but I think we've seen some real, you know, improved communication and progress because
Resources.
We talk about integration, so we need to talk about K through 12, like, so the resources, we definitely, this is my last year at Glover, I have a 5th grader, and I also have a, someone at middle school and a junior at the high school, and you definitely see that top-down approach now. You see the, the combination of the curriculum and expectations, but also, one thing, and I know the school committee is really addressing this, is, and we talked about this at the first site council meeting, there are a lot of kits. It's 575 now, I think we're at, we're almost at capacity at Glover physically and space-wise, and I know that's something that's been talked about, in getting the common nomenclature across classrooms and so on. So I do think, in terms of resources, keep them coming and keep it consistent, because I, and I know the administration says as well, you don't see it year one, year two, you do see it year three, you see it year four, and you're not necessarily going to see, you know, something coming out of Glover, but you'll see that in Pierce, and you can already see, just anecdotally, the high schoolers that came to help us with Lego League, they said, "Oh, STEM wasn't here when we were here, and we could have," you know, they just, they're kind of jealous of the elementary experience because it wasn't there when they were there, so, and that continuity. I think in terms of resources, there's just, it's just keep, keep feeding it because it does reap benefits, and you're not going to see it one year, you're definitely going to see it over the course, course of time.
Thank you.
Sheila, just one question. On the, the Science MCAS for High Needs, do you happen to know what the raw numbers were for that 17%? Okay. Just how many that represented, was it?
Yes. The high needs, just get my card. Oh, I left it here.
Let me see.
So for this year, in terms of the science, or last year, or both?
Both, if you have it.
I do, actually. So last year, I'm sorry, 2013, 2014, which would have been two years ago, we had 31 high needs, and out of those 31, there were 102 students in Grade 5 that year. 31 of those were high needs.
Yeah.
We had that, that year, 10 needs improvement, 6 advanced, and 15 proficient.
Okay.
Last year, which was reported and what you saw up there, we had 88 students, 23 high needs, and one big difference here, we had six warnings, where we had no warnings the year before. 13 needs improvements, 3 proficient, and 1 advanced.
So is it, so is it, did I get this right, Sheila, that you went from 10, no, 31 high needs in, two years ago, and 23 high needs this year?
Yes.
Is that right? Okay.
We also had 14 more students the year before as well.
Right, that's what those percentages are based on?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very, oh, Dr. Donnie.
Sorry, we were ping-ponging back and forth, and a few more comments, no more questions. I wanted to say that, building off, remember Bagley Jones' comments earlier, I, and remember Walker's, I appreciate the directness of the, of the presentation, and I'm going to presage some later comments now, that it's difficult to tackle a problem if you don't identify it first, so that is appreciated. In terms of the social-emotional curriculum and the, the third part of your goals, specifically 21st century focus, I thought that there's, is a potential for some 21st century focus, I thought that there's a potential for some synergy and some pitfalls there that I just wanted to mention to see how, to make sure that people are aware of that, that the concept of building sort of healthy study habits and dealing with stress would fit in nicely with the social-emotional curriculum, would also sort of fold in nicely with the extended day activities. And the emphasis that learning doesn't always happen in school, it's not just a lifelong activity, it's a day-long activity, but there are sort of peaks and troughs with that, too, and to build that in so that children, as they move through the day, they are learning throughout the day, but they're also learning how to deal with the fact that they're "on", quote-unquote, for extended periods of time during the day. And I thought, quite frankly, that turning the library into a collaborative space was a great idea. I mean, that's how you hear about, you know, startups, and the next great idea is happening. It's where you get people from multiple different areas, multiple different spaces, sort of talking, communicating, and there's no reason that we can't replicate that on the elementary school level, but that was a great idea. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted.
Thank you very much.
Next, we'd like to invite up, we're going to move into our youth risk behavior survey results, and bring up Principal James Jett and Lori Stillman. Did join us at the table?
Let me have a check this board.
If I might, while you're getting yourself settled, Lori Stillman sat for many years on this side of the table as a school committee member, a Milton Public School parent of two students from, that went through the Tucker, Pierce, and the high school, and we could stay here all night talking about their accomplishments, I'm very proud of them. And now, Ms. Stillman's career has been, and she is now a senior consultant, working at the state in northeast area, but her role brought on the Milton Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition, brought her as a resident expert to our wellness committee and under the leadership of Krista Bagley Jones, and working with us as the youth risk behavior survey was administered, and the results interpreted, and what our next steps are going to be. So this, again, you have Principal Jett, oh, you think I'm stealing your?
Absolutely not, so if it sounds a little, if I did, please forgive us.
I only wanted to.
It happens every time, but.
But, well, you were getting ready, so. It's yours.
So first and foremost, thank you for allowing us this opportunity to share the results that we found emerging from the youth risk behavior survey. For most people, they know who I am, James Jett, Principal of Milton High School, but I would give Lori Stillman an opportunity to introduce herself, and then we'll move right into our presentation.
Well, it's nice to be back at this table. Yes, I'm Lori Stillman. I used to be on the school committee. I have two grown children who graduated from the Milton Public Schools, and, but my last 35 years, my profession has been in public health, and I have a master's degree in Health and Human Services Management with a concentration in health policy, and I'm currently, I have a number of clients, but one of them is the Milton Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition. So I'm very happy to be here to present with Mr. Jett this survey, because the YRBS actually is a best practice survey that many schools are encouraged to engage in, in order to help their students be successful.
So I guess I will start the presentation with a comment that Dr. Donahue just mentioned in the last one, by saying if you don't know what the problem is, it's very difficult to tackle it. And so this is a survey that we administered to approximately 487 students that were randomly selected, and the goal was simply to say, hey, we do a great job with our students academically and socially, but trying to tackle the whole child, we wanted to get their voice and get their information from students as to what, some of the behaviors that they were engaging in, and finding some of the challenges. And that's what initiated this. I think it's very important to say it was voluntary, we weren't selected nationally, but this is something that we wanted to seek the information and be able to report out on. So, again, we compared ourselves not only to the national, the nation, but we also did it to Massachusetts and Metro West, and to give you a few examples of some of the schools that we compared to were Wellesley, Weston, Newton, Leneck, Ashland, and Lincoln Sudbury. And before I continue, I want to give credit to Dr. Alicia Lynch from the Boston College Lynch School of Education. She's a postgraduate, postdoctoral student, who did the calculations and analysis for us, and shared that with us in multiple different presentations. So again, conducted voluntarily in December of last year, and some of you may say, well, why did it take so long? The average is well over a year, a year and a month before we report the data, but I think it was important, when we got the data towards the tail end of the school year, we wanted to make sure that all of the constituents knew what the data was before we went out to the public. So we had the opportunity to share this information with our faculty and staff, we'd share it with our wellness committee, and we shared it with the school site council, and our goal was to share it with the school committee, and that's what we're doing here this evening. Again, randomly selected from 487 students, and I should put in the caveat, although 487 students participated in it, they didn't, not all 487 answered every question, but they did answer enough where it was significant to record, and so we're going to talk a little bit about our highlights and some of our challenges and strengths. And I apologize, students, for turning my back to you. Some of our highlights are our strengths. 12% of Milton High School students reported incidents of being bullied on school property. When I say it's a highlight, I do want to put emphasis on it. We'd like to see that as zero, but we know that that's less than the nation in less than students in the Metro West area. 9% of the students reported incidents of being cyberbullied, whereas 22% of the students in Metro West reported the same. So we were significantly lower than the Metro West. Sexual activity. Among sexually active students, Milton High School females were more likely to use contraceptives/birth control than Metro Wests in the U.S. And also, 7% of the students reported having smoked cigarettes in the last 30 days, and keep in mind, this survey was administered last December 2014. And Metro West students reported 60% students have smoked cigarettes. In terms of illicit drugs, Milton High School is less likely to use those drugs, drugs such as ecstasy, cocaine, hallucinogens, heroin, and methamphetamines. By me saying that again, although I say less likely to use it, we are trying to shoot for no one using it, and I want to make that very clear. We want it to be a drug zone school, but hopefully that extends to the community and home as well. Drugs on school property, and I would like to flip this, because I think this is very important. 85% of Milton High School students have never had drugs either offered to them, sold to them, or given to them on school property. So the slide says 15% were offered, given, or sold on school property. What it does not say is the time of day, and I'm not making any excuses for it, but again, I would like that to be down to zero. Alcohol use, 79, excuse me, 73, basically 74% of Milton High School students reported that they consumed alcohol, compared with that of 66% of the United States and 63% of Massachusetts and 56% of Metro West. That is a concern that we have, and you'll see that as we move through the slide, and we'll give you some strategies and information as to how we hope to tackle that with the support of families and community. Drunk driving, less than 10%, 6% of Milton High School students stated that they had driven in a car under the influence of alcohol, whereas 9% of the Metro West students and 10% of the students in the United States. Alcohol use continued, 35% of Milton High School students reported binge drinking versus 19% of that of Metro West and 21% of the United States. That is very obvious that we're a little higher than both, but again, our goal is to continue to work and tackle that with the support of parents and community, and that's going to be the theme throughout this presentation. Alcohol and sexual activity, 29% of Milton High School students use alcohol before some sort of sexual activity, whereas 22% of students in the United States. The comparison data, we did not have that from students in the Metro West area. Marijuana use, 33% of Milton High School students reported an incident of marijuana use in the last 30 days versus 22% of the Metro West students and 23% of students in the United States. Another one, and I, we kind of lumped all three of these together because it's a cyclical effect in some cases, but 25% of Milton High School students reported feeling depressed, whereas 20% of the Metro West students and 30% of students in the United States said that they had symptoms or feelings of depression. And we even tried to look at it a little closely, closely in terms of gender, 33% of Milton High School females and 17% of Milton High School males reported feeling depressed. The last one, which is very significant, and it is always alarming, I don't care if it was down to 1%, but Milton High School students had a lower rate of suicide attempts at 3% versus Metro West, which was 5% and 8% for students throughout the U.S. So, what are some of our goals? Looking back at some of the data, our goal is to decrease the alcohol and marijuana use, either to equal to the national norms or well below the national norms. It is a lofty goal, but I think it's something that we could do it with the partnerships of parents and families and support programs that we have coming in to the Milton Public Schools, reduce student depression rates. We've come to the school committee several times, and we've talked about the need for the transitional program, we've talked about the need for adjustment councils, we talk about needs for supports, that's highlighted in our health and wellness, that's something that we're working on for our curriculum throughout the Milton Public Schools, which is the directive of Superintendent Mary Gormly in the school committee. So we want to make sure that that's something that we kind of reduce in those two areas. And we want to initiate multi-pronged approaches to improve student well-being, recognize the positive adolescent behavior, and health requires collaborations, I stated that several times throughout the presentation, develop key collaborations with community partnerships, which we have done and we will continue to do to enhance that, and continue to exist, continue existing program for parents, students, and teachers, and add strategic evidence-based resources. What are some of those things? Excuse me. We, Michelle Cruiser did a lot of work last year with the Milton Substance Abuse Coalition and attended that. Michelle Cruiser is now in a new role as math department head, K-12. I am now sitting on that committee, and I sit on that committee along with members from Milton Police, Milton Hospital, Fallon Ambulance, parents, community agencies. My first meeting was very overwhelming, 30-something people in the room, but all with great ideas, all with a common cause, and that is to work with the youth in the town of Milton. We also have a great relationship with our Chief Wells and the Milton Police in terms of supports that they had. I'm going to jump down to SAD and to give you an idea of what we talk about, the supports. Our SAD, Students Against Destructive Decisions, just received a $5,000 grant. As part of that grant, there's a training session on this Saturday and Sunday out in Worcester, where Chief Wells coordinated with a cadet to take Stephanie O'Mobonagh, one of our teachers, and Erica Dunn, is it Dunton at the middle school? She will go on Sunday on behalf of that, and they're going out to Worcester as part of this training to receive this grant. We also, as part of SAD, we have a collaboration with Liberty Mutual, where we do the crash car simulation. They come out every year before the prom. They also supply us with, sometimes with grant money, to help us with different initiatives, so we're very appreciative of that partnership as well. It made reference to binge drinking and things like that. One of the things that we kicked off this year with was a mandatory slash strongly encourage chemical health awareness. Evening, we had well over 300 to 400 people in the audience between students and parents on August 31st, which was the Monday before school started, trying to kick off the year with a positive message. Hopefully, some students walked away with a message of staying away from drugs and making better decisions, drugs and alcohol. Parent Resource Guide, I will say Kristin Bagley Jones, Rich Guarino, members of the Health and Wellness, along with Lori Stillman, they've worked diligently putting together this resource guide that will hopefully come out pretty soon to parents, to provide them with information and talking points on how to support them in having conversations with their children and what they need to do in terms of support. And I should have said that, this whole presentation and this whole thing was awareness, prevention, and support. Those are the overriding themes that we wanted to make sure that we have for our students regarding these issues. The B-PAC, which is our Bullying Prevention Advisory Committee, spearheaded by Lisa Veldren, who's a guidance counselor down at the Pierce Middle School, they have monthly meetings, we have activities woven into the curriculum. We do a presentation with all of our students at the beginning of the year, we do a presentation with all of our faculty and staff, to make sure that they understand the signs, the symptoms, and how to report. And as you see from some of the numbers, I think that the numbers are low in terms of percentages because of the great work that has been done with everyone, the awareness of everyone, including the families as well, in terms of reporting. We talk about, and I mentioned the Katie Grae, the internet safety, to Chris Herren, the substance abuse prevention. I would say on both of those, we were very appreciative of the support of BID Milton, who gave us a generous gift to help us bring Chris Herren, that was a very costly initiative, but Peter Healy and Bob McChrystal worked very closely with us and was, supported us in those initiatives. The health curriculum, and we talked about this, and this is something that I mentioned at the Substance Abuse Coalition back in September, I really think that this message needs to be really focused in as early as the elementary schools. I think that our students are growing up with technology and exposure to so many things that we didn't have to face when we were younger, so I think the earlier that we start hammering in this message, the better off we'd be in years to come. We talk about our anti-bullying program, that's, our whole policy is on the website, any parent could access that at any time on how to report. We have some training for our teachers. South Shore Facts Conference, I am happy to say, even though I don't live in Milton, I work in Milton, Milton had the largest contingency of faculty. At that meeting, which was held at Labato's in Randolph, so, and they've already come back sharing some of that information and hopefully integrating that into curriculum or different activities that we have here at the high school. Anti-bullying is up there twice because it is an entire initiative. And that's pretty much quickly, very overall, in a nutshell, of what that, what the data said to us. There's a lot of information that's part of that survey, anywhere, everything from exercising and eating habits and things like that, but there are some concerns that we thought emerged, more importantly, that we thought it was really a concern, and that was the reduction of alcohol, marijuana use, and definitely trying to do our best to reduce the amount of our depression that some of our students experience, particularly in our females. Yes?
Lori, were you going to stop? I don't mean to tell you to.
That's fine, no. First of all, I think, Mr. Jett, you did a wonderful job presenting the information.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, no, I do want to say this, I want to congratulate the Milton Public Schools for actually having done this. A number of schools do this survey, and a number of schools don't, and some that do don't necessarily, aren't transparent about the data. Others, like the Milton Public Schools, have said, we want to know what we have before us, and we want to face it, and we want to do the best for our kids. You know, I think the important thing is that the response not be an emotional response. There's a science around dealing with substance abuse issues. Many communities have turned those statistics around when they've come together, and they've made a commitment to look at evidence-based strategies, not emotional strategies about what individuals personally think is the best thing to do, just say no, but to really look at what the science says about curricula, education, supports, and the like. I do want to say that the Milton Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition just released its website with a lot of resources as well, so that while the schools have done a wonderful job pulling resources on your webpage, please look at our website as well, milton-coalition.org, and avail yourselves of information there.
Great. Ms. Rella?
Thank you very much. It was a great presentation, and to the
Thank you very much, it was a great presentation, and to the Wellness, Ms. Bagley-Jones and the Wellness Committee for doing this. I wanted to ask about, in the survey, I mean, the alcohol use, what I wanted to speak to is the alcohol use being at like seventy-three percent, and then drunk driving only being at, was it six percent there? Which, you know, I know as a PTO leadership member at Pierce the past couple of years, this has been a really big concern, and this is even just coming from students, from the kids at the Pierce. I still have a son there, my daughter's up at the high school now, but even amongst her friends, when I would say, what, you know, what issues do you think are happening? They kept telling me, you know, drugs and alcohol, drugs and alcohol. They said, "We know so much about bullying," which I think reflects that the anti-bullying percentage is very low, because I think the district has done great work in educating both the student population and the parent population. Some of them said, "I know so much about bullying, I think I could go out and lecture," you know, like they've been done to us. So, I do think that we have slacked off a little bit about bringing speakers in, both to the students and the parents, about this issue, so I really think that's why the seventy-three percent is so high. I also feel that kids and parents feel, well, they're not driving, so that's okay, so that's why we're down at like six or seven percent of that, but it's okay if they drink, hence seventy-three percent is there. So, I hope that for the drinking slash substance use, we put a lot, we work together and put a lot of time and effort into presentations, both to the students and the parents, though, the parent population. We've had Chief Wells come and speak many times at Pierce, and it does start very young, but we also hear, and I'm going to just speak very frankly, some parents think it's okay, and they speak up at those parent, those middle school Pierce PTO meetings saying, "Well, it's going to happen, so I let them drink and I'll pick them up." I mean, and I know that it can get heated a bit because it's issues, but I do think education needs to come into play, so what we can give to parents would be really, really great, and maybe help reduce that seventy-three percent. And then the other thing I wanted to ask or speak to is the depression, and especially noticing that it was high amongst female students. I think even from, I mean, I have a daughter, I don't, those of us out there, and even talking to many of the teachers through the years in the Milton Public Schools, and I don't know if it's a boy-girl thing because the percentage is so different, but innately I think girls just put so much pressure on themselves to achieve and do well, that a lot of them are more depressed than we think because they, they don't think they're achieving, you know, to the benchmark that is expected of them. And we, I hear that a lot, that the teachers, you know, try to help female students with, but that it's a very common thing they see where boys, even at middle and high school, don't seem to, not that it's not present, but I'm not surprised to see that the depression numbers in female students are higher. So, any kind of, I know a while back there was doing some with Bridgewater State, they do some girl empowerment stuff with their school of ed, but stuff like that, if, anything we could reach out for that for would be, would be great.
The first thing that you talked about in terms of parent initiatives or education, one of the things that I would say to parents, when we do have these events and when we do have these nights, we encourage people, whether it's Internet, Internet Safety, Chemical Health Awareness, come out. It's not an indictment on you, your family, or your child, it's not an, it's all about education, and education, I think someone said it over here, it shouldn't happen between the hours of 7:50 and 2:19. It should happen all the time. So, that's one thing, and I think this, you know, this is anecdotal, but it could be that the depression is up a little higher in females because of concerns about body images. Having those conversations with your young daughters, not just when they're in middle school or high school, but when they're very early on, letting them know that they're precious gems. I think that's very, very important. Magazine, social network, the media portrays and put out what they think is socially acceptable in terms of your parents, and sometimes that plays into it. But there's a lot of different stresses that factor into it. One of the things I say is, we're very active, I will say at the high school, we have a support team. I've already highlighted and acknowledged a couple of teachers, particularly a science teacher, Melissa Burns, teachers are doing lunch duty, they keep an eye on who's sitting alone, they keep an eye on who's having difficulties, they're checking the changes in terms of the dynamics of groups. When we hear a concern or an issue, we address it immediately, and we try to involve all stakeholders, whether it's parents, family, or connecting them with different resources and supports. So, I think all of those things happen, but again, it can't just happen at the school. I think it has to happen at the parents, and it's, it all boils down to coping skills and decision-making. I think coping skills and decision-making, if we could educate the students as best we can at an earlier age, I think that they would do a better job in making these more appropriate decisions. One of the things that was up on there, we talked about the Positive Social Norms Campaign, Superintendent Gormly's on, is it stall news, bathroom stall news? We're going to talk about
Street news.
Sometimes students have misinformation as to, they make the assumption all kids are doing it, or all kids happen. What I need to say, and we didn't delve into this in terms of the whole report, students at Milton High School feel safe, they're less likely to engage in fighting, bring weapons to school, anything like that. They come to school thriving every single day, a hundred and eighty days a year. I boast about that all the time, we have wonderful students, but with a thousand students, sometimes students strike, and it's our job to get them back on track. So, I will say that there's a lot of great things that are happening at Milton High School in the community with the support of the school committee, along with all of the faculty and staff.
Ms. Gormly?
May I add to Ms. Verella's point about it being a K-12 issue and a community issue? In the school committee two years ago, added to their budget, two health teachers at the middle school. And so, I take people's breath away when I say at the elementary school, we always had one physical education and one health class, and now two thousand elementary school children have one physical education class a week and no health. And so, you have to recognize Dr. Karen Spalding and the health teachers that were hired, besides putting health at the middle school, the health teachers are extraordinary at the middle school. And, you know, if we could hire Lori Stillman and Deborah Maubauer in the audience, I would, because when we have these discussions, it has to be around the whole community. So, James Jett feels he owns the responsibility, Dr. Karen Spalding, I feel that we own the responsibility. And the problem that we have that we should talk about tonight is that we have brought in these speakers and, and parents and guardians don't attend. I will tell you, at the Heron presentation, James sat at the door and he could tell you the statistics. So, we understand sometime, people have busy lives, people feel they're identified as the issue, so we're looking for all different ways to bring this information to parents. We're going to start a monthly Milton Cable television show with MPEG, and so, parents who are busy can then just, as they're channel surfing, gather the information, because we have brought nationally recognized speakers in, and I just wanted eight hundred people in the audience to then tell sixteen hundred people out there the message, if it wasn't about cyberbullying, it was about these health issues. So, we're very open, and we should survey the parents more of how to get this information to them, because we're educators and we're learning all the time. And so, we have to help parents and guardians and the greater community learn. And one other note that Ms. Verella said about young girls, Dr. Spalding has, and Mr. Zulz and his wife are assisting us with an expert in the field, starting a young girls organization, some work with young girls after school at the Pierce School.
That's great. Great.
Before you speak, while we're on that, I would invite parents to come out on November 18th, it's called Power Up. It's about positive women within the community overcoming obstacles and adversity to get to where they are in terms of success in their lives. They'll be speaking to the audience. One student asked, "Well, can boys come or can men come?" Absolutely, anyone and everyone could come. So, that's another opportunity for parents, November 18th, right here in the Chelsea Winchester Auditorium.
I also wanted to just say that the issue about girls and depression is universal, it's not just in the Milton Public Schools.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
One of the things that I wanted to say is how important data is, and I know how important data is around academics for the school committee, data is really important around this as well. So, we can speculate why girls are depressed, we can speculate why we have higher rates of alcohol use, but I think that it's really incumbent on us to ask a little deeper, why? And so, that might require, for instance, us pulling together some focus groups of kids to really ask the questions, why, and what are your solutions, what are your thoughts for how we can address this? Same thing with parents, you know, why do you think that these are issues, and what are your knowledge and beliefs that might actually be contributing to some of these things? So, I think that's how the Milton Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition can be supportive of you. I mean, this is not necessarily only your job, and you need resources and support and expertise to look at the best practices, and that's where we're happy to, to help you support and do that.
Ms. Bagley-Jones?
There's a conspiracy that may not speak, because, you know, I could talk about this for about three hours, but I won't. So, it's so interesting to me that I'm sitting here and Lori's sitting across the table from me, because before I was on the school committee many years ago, Lori was on the school committee and she sat in this chair, and she organized or worked on some data around, I don't know if it was youth risk, but it was similar to it, and there was a town hall forum, and what I took away from that is lock up the alcohol in my house. That was one piece of advice that I walked away, that I remembered many years later when it was appropriate for the age of my children. So, that's where I started with this in Milton, and now here we are, full circle. So, this has been, I really want to say that this youth risk behavior survey, as you alluded to, is a very brave thing for Superintendent Gormly to allowed us to push her into doing in the health and wellness. We talked about it for a while, we wanted the data, and it's a lot to go out there and say, "We're going to ask kids these questions, and then we're going to report out on it." And it was very brave of her to do it, and from the rest of the school committee. When we first started talking about this in Health and Wellness a number of years ago, it was because there had been a rash of deaths from heroin, heroin and oxycontin and all of, no, heroin in Quincy, Wamouth, and Milton, and there had just been, and we were sitting in Health and Wellness going, "Oh, my God." And someone who was on the committee at the time said, "Yeah, there were nineteen kids in their young twenties in the South Shore area that were going in and out of rehab for opiates." And we all just looked at each other, and even though they weren't Milton kids per se, they definitely touched Milton kids, and that's when we started to think, "We need to do more about this, we need to gather the data, we need to figure out what we're doing." You know, on this, and like you alluded to Lori, in education, when you want to improve performance or test scores, you look at the data. Well, that's what the Youth Risk Behavior Survey does, it looks at the data. There's some great data in there about our great kids and some great choices that they're making, and then there's some that aren't so great, and so, you know, we are going to focus on that, but it's not easy data to look at, it's not easy data to hear about, it's not easy data to have reported in the paper, so I hope that, you know, we get the good things that we've been doing in Milton as well, because I think that raising awareness for students, for parents, for the community, for the residents, because it is not just a Milton High School problem, it is not just a Pierce Middle School problem, it is for the whole town, it's, all of the residents need to be aware of this and involved in it. And I think we have done some things already, that I want to add a couple of things there that you've, that we've already done. Under the Resources for Parents, one of the things that we emphasized on the Health and Wellness is, we knew we had these events and nobody showed up. It's very busy, lots of reasons, stigmatizing, whatever, so that's why we put together the Family Resource Pages, so that the Adjustment Counselors and the Superintendent's email blast could tell parents, "Hey, if you want to find out about gambling addiction, if you want to find out about a eating disorder, if you want to find out about drugs and alcohol and resources, you can go to the website and not have to ask anybody about it." So, that's the point of the Family Resource Projects, is to help keep some privacy for parents or kids who want to know more about issues but don't really want to ask somebody else. So, the Parent Resource Guide, Lori and I and others are working on having some simple handouts as well, it was like, what are some things you can say? But there is already the Family Resource Pages project on the Milton High School, on the Milton Public Schools website. Also, there are the peer leaders at the high school who do a great deal of work with our kids around this stuff that should be up there too.
Actually, that list could be a lot longer, and it could be twenty more slides.
Yeah. No, I know, there's a lot that you do. And I do, and so, in terms of next steps forward, I think that everybody on the school committee and in the administration is probably sick of me talking about the importance of health education. My kids are a little bit older, younger than Lori's, but a little bit older than some of the others, and the difference in, you know, what my kid said to me, especially my oldest would say, "Mom, it's not 1950s anymore, nobody drives and drinks." We know that. How do you know that, through health education? And not that our health education isn't still good, but it's not as much time-wise as it used to be, and I've seen a real difference. I just did a focus group in my car the other day with some college students, and I say, "Hey, what's this about binge drinking?" And they were like, "That's because kids don't know what happens to you when you binge drink, and what actually goes on," and they, you know, and so, it was interesting. I had my own little focus group and I got all that information to share with you. And then the other thing was, is the strong health education curriculum, but a lot, you know, the health educators, and then the Adjustment Counselors. The Adjustment Counselors do an incredible job in Milton with helping kids, and I think people know who the Adjustment Counselors are, and they reach out to them, and I think parents also know for the most part that the Adjustment Counselors are there. So, we do have a lot of resources in place, I believe, and I know, like you said, that list could be even longer, but I just think it's really important for parents and residents and kids listening out there that there are resources, as you've pointed out, and now I think everybody at this table takes the health and wellness very, very seriously around our kids. Sorry, that was less than three hours, but a little bit of rambling, and you can tell this is clearly an issue very dear to my heart, and I appreciate Superintendent Gormly allowing the health and wellness to really push a lot of these issues, and that's really, really appreciated. So, I just want to acknowledge her bravery.
She's giving me too much credit, and I'm not brave, and I don't allow anything. We all work collaboratively, and if we save a life and we change a life, all of the work is of value. And so, it's working collaboratively, no one can do it alone. And I think Ms. Bagley-Jones clearly articulated the goal of the district very, very well, and the, and the work goes on. And if you're not healthy, then you can't learn.
And there's no need ever, Kristin, to apologize for making useful and helpful comments, so.
That's right. Thank you.
Mr. Walker?
So, I agree that transparency is important, even if it's alarming, and this is alarming. I, I think we need two things here, and tendency is to list the things we're doing and talk about the resources that are in place. I don't think, and this is my emotional reaction, I'll acknowledge that, I don't think the problem here is people aren't using the resources that are available. These are some pretty alarming statistics, and I would guess that the ones on illicit drug use, driving drunk, and suicide attempts are underreported. So, this is clearly a situation that cries out for two things, one, why are these statistics as high as they are? And then, two, what are the strategies and best practices nationally that will help us to address them? Right now, we have a very good list of action steps and a list of resources, but those are all tactics. We need a strategy, and that should be based on data, and it should be based on best practices. But we are sorely in need of a strategy to attack this, and this is, this is a conversation that's been going on for a very long time in Milton, but I, I'm hoping that this is, and it's, it's so important to get this kind of data, so I hope that this inspires us to do some things that we haven't done today. And the third point there is, let's be clear about who should, who has the responsibility to do what and deliver what results, who's accountable, and
All of us.
Well, no, that's not good enough, because that, that never works. Is it the Health and Wellness Committee, is it the Coalition, is it the school committee? Is it the school committee? Is it the superintendent? Now, I want a single, a single point of accountability, not, yes, we're all concerned, but no, we're not all accountable.
Can I respond to that?
I agree with you, there has to be some responsibility, but I think because this is such complicated, there are complicated reasons why this data exists the way that it does. So it does take a village to deal with these issues, or a town like Milton. And I think Laurie had a really good point when we were talking earlier about, you know, this is a town issue, it's not just a school issue. So our accountability, I think, as a school committee and a superintendent, is to make sure that we do provide and continue to prioritize what we need in the schools to deal with this. But we can't do it just on the schools. It's just, it's, it's, and if we can go from, you know, three kids are driving and drinking to two, or whatever, let's make progress in that way. So I don't really know how we would do accountability, and you probably have some ideas about that you, too, but I do think it's an ongoing process. And our accountability, I think, would be to say, this continues to be a priority in terms of funding, in terms of health education, in terms of Adjustment Counselors, in terms of working with the Coalition and the police. I mean, to me, those are the priorities that have to happen.
Perhaps in terms of Mr. Walker's questions, those are things that Health and Wellness can take a look at.
And we have them, and we'll continue to.
Dr. Donahue.
Thank you. Thank you very much for this data. Thank you to the students who provided it, presumably honestly. And thank you in advance to the future students, who I'm sure will be mining for additional data. I, I'm, I'm not thrilled that we're talking about this, but it's important that we're talking about this. And if this leads in the Milton Times in the next edition, and, you know, it prompts parents to have conversations with their students in the cars, then I think that's a great thing. Because this is something that, that does need to be talked about and, and addressed. And it is, it's a multifactorial issue that involves lots of facets of the community and requires community involvement and engagement, and, and I sincerely hope that we get it. A lot of excellent points have been made, I will not repeat them all. I, I do want to address that, I think part of the, as you pointed out, scientific approach to dealing with some of these problems is a discussion of what norms are, in particular norms with non- illicit substances, alcohol, tobacco, and to some extent Massachusetts now marijuana, that, you know, we, we really need a discussion about what, what is an appropriate use of these substances. And I think it makes people's heads, it, I think it shocks some people when they discover what the definition of binge drinking is. And that, that is an important part of this conversation, so that these activities that are, are not being talked about for a number of reasons, are not only talked about, but, but you're specifically addressing just how deeply abnormal some of this behavior is, and is the first step towards making sure that we can, we can stop it. And that's, now it's getting late, so I'll confine my comments to that. Thank you.
I know, it's like, can I just, two more things, real quick?
Ms. Verella.
Yeah. The first thing, I do want to just echo what Superintendent Gormly spoke to with regard to the health program, and even Ms. Bagley-Jones speaking about when her, her children had health. But the rallying around getting health to every child in the middle school, I think, is it just for responsibility that we would have, is a great step in the right direction. And we did have a big health night last month at Pierce, where the health teachers presented the curriculum to the, to the parent community, and then also had Dr. Tara Cousineau speak about, you know, risky behavior and choices at the adolescent to teenage years. And it was really well attended, and we had to do some, some interaction and group work, which at first some parents were a little skeptical about, but then joined in. And I, I think that, even though I know in the past it hasn't been well attended, I think the information really got parents talking, really asking a lot of good questions. So I'm hoping that the data that you guys provide will, you know, if there's future seminars and information, will, what's the word I'm looking for? Help them initiate attending and getting more intel. I don't know if some parents don't think things out there are maybe as bad as, as it is. And then the other question I had, I know, Laurie, you spoke about, you all do focus groups, I mean, why is it happening? Is that any possibility of, like, next steps, that you would have focus groups around teens? And if so, I have a question, and you guys can answer or not, but just for teen representation, if focus groups like this were, were had, do you think the population at Milton High, the kids would maybe participate and be fairly honest with their answers? I mean, I know, again, it's tough, it's a tough topic to sometimes be honest about. I just got reaction.
You don't have to answer.
You don't have to answer if you don't want to.
Well, the brave.
Well, I know that this is a pretty controversial issue at Milton High, that some kids take it seriously, some others don't. But I think, not to go off topic, but I think, like, a really big problem is marijuana, because when that comes up, I'm kind of against it, and I don't become a very popular person when that happens. But, um, yeah, some kids actually think that by the time we graduate college, it's going to become legal, which might actually be a possibility, because if my generation believes that, you know, it's okay and there's nothing bad that happens when you deal with the long-term effects, and they'll vote, and it'll become a national issue, and they'll vote, and it'll become legal. So I just think there needs to be more, like, focus on that. But going back, yeah, I think people will take it seriously.
Can I say one more thing?
Ms. Bagley-Jones.
So in terms of following up on Mr. Walker's comment, my thought was for the Health and Wellness Subcommittee to take each concern and have a, think about a plan. Mr. Jett's on that, Superintendent's on that, and then to also take each positive and think about what has worked about that. And then help with getting the focus groups and who does the focus groups, because it's got to be done in a certain way, and, and all of that. But that might be a way to make sure that we have responsibility for driving the next steps in the project. That, and we can talk more about that, but that was an idea.
Mr. Walker.
And the only thing I would add to that is some means to assess what national best practices are. Somebody's got to be responsible for that. So there may be some expert assistance that you could secure.
We're happy to do that, by the way. The Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition does have experts, including Deborah, who actually does this, Deborah Milbauer, for a living. I do this kind of thing for a living. And we have funding in our grant to actually spend time, coalesce the best practices, and then hopefully bring together maybe a school Subcommittee to look at what those best practices are, and determine which would be the priority ones, and what they would cost, and see what, to what extent our grant might be able to support that.
Great.
And the reason that I would suggest what I had said about our, and going through the Health and Wellness, is that there are also other issues that aren't related directly, even though I think the marijuana and the alcohol are two very serious points, there are some other issues that have to be addressed, too. So, but it is a collaboration that we've already started, and we'll continue to work on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, James.
Nice job.
Thank you, Laurie Stillman. Briefly, in conclusion, first, I'm going to ask Assistant Superintendent Sheehan to give you an update. She was able to get a preview, sneak preview of.
I, I attended the, the dress rehearsal for Forty Second Street prior to our meeting. And I have to tell you that I think I will have a smile on my face for at least the next week, and I am, I am certain that you will, if you attend this production. The, the talent is just incredible for high school students. The music, the dancing, the acting, just really phenomenal and delightful. They're a very hardworking, talented group, and I urge everyone to attend the production. It's, it's going to take place tomorrow night, Friday night?
No, no.
No, two nights from now, let's see. Friday night at 7:00 PM, right here.
Yep.
No, that's football, that's football night.
Thursday, seven.
Thursday, all right. It is tomorrow night.
Yeah.
Do you have the list? Thursday night. Thursday night at 7:00 PM, and then the productions on Saturday are at 2:00 PM and 7:00 PM.
And this, this is what you want. They're going fast, so.
Tickets are on sale.
Tickets are on sale at the high school office, and I think Pierce as well.
At Pierce, yes.
So this is what you want, they're going fast, so go out and get them.
And we have the mother of a star on your school committee table. Yesterday, I snuck into the auditorium, and I said to school committee member Verella, her daughter danced like she was the only dancer on the stage, and her smile lit up the whole deck auditorium. So I will promise anyone who goes, just like Assistant Superintendent Sheehan, they will leave with their feet snapping and humming a song. And so tremendous amount of, to your high school students, tremendous amount of talent. And they're there every night late, their discipline is unbelievable, and their talent. We had Mr. Sullivan share the Retired Flag Project next week. There will be no school on Veterans Day. All of the schools will put out on the website and in the Superintendent's email blast, the ceremonies that are very moving, that are going to happen at all of our schools, and I'll put out to the school committee if you can stop by one of the ceremonies. On November 12th, we have a half a day for student-parent, teacher-parent conferences. I want to be sure that every parent has signed up, and our principals and teachers are working to be sure that all parents get in to discuss report cards that will be sent home before parent-teacher conferences. We have concerts at Pierce coming up, a cabaret, but we'll be sure in the website through tweeting and our email blast and our principals' vehicles, that we get the word out to all of the parents and guardians in the community.
Can I ask a question?
Well, I do have one bit of news before you. Well, I probably shouldn't be giving this. I heard Dr. Pavlicek did an outstanding job, Jim and Zulus, in my absence, about the sports update.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think his nickname is Sporty now.
Right. And so, very briefly, tonight, we don't, I don't know, no one signaled me, but number 19 Milton Boys Soccer played number 14-ranked Bishop Fien at 6:00 for a tournament. Tonight also, the Bay State Conference Cheerleader Competition is happening at Braintree at 6:30. Tomorrow night, number 16-seeded Girls, Milton Girls Soccer will play number one, Appen, Appa?
Aponequit.
Appenobiquet?
Aponequit.
Aponequit, thank you. Thank you very much. At 6:00 Thursday night. On Friday, there is an event, I don't know if anyone hasn't heard about this event, they must have been out of town. What's happening Friday night? From the end?
Game.
A big?
Football.
Football game, excellent. Milton is playing Stoughton for a tournament play, and on Monday, the 9th, our Girls, number six-seeded Girls volleyball team will play, play number three-seeded Canton at 7:00 o'clock, location to be announced. And so you know, if, again, you live or know anyone who lives in Milton, you have been asked to vote for Milton High School-Stoughton game to be televised Friday night. And tonight at 11:00 on Fox 25, I'm correct? The announcement will be made. I have a sneaking suspicion that the news might be outstanding, but one way or the other, we're very excited. And two, as everyone in the Milton Public Schools will tell you, the enthusiasm of the Boys Football Team has carried over to all of the sports. I wish Principal Jett was still here. He's getting calls from football players from the 1963 team across the country, wishing him best wishes to our team. And the significance in all of this is the town of Milton, but most importantly, the students at Milton High School, and the spirit they have, and as your principal said tonight, the quality of the young people in this town. So that's our happenings.
Thank you, Ms. Gormly. Moving on to the Chair's report, the first item is the Superintendent's Mid-Cycle Update. One of the primary responsibilities for this school committee is to oversee and to evaluate the superintendent. In August of 2012, the school committee adopted a Massachusetts model for evaluation of the superintendent that is comprised of a five-stage process. That Massachusetts model is, is, was developed by the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. It is a, is an elaborate evaluation model that is used for teachers, administrators, and also applied in this instance, in instance, to the superintendent. As I said, this school committee adopted this Massachusetts model, adopted by our Department of, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. The five stages are self-assessment by the superintendent, analysis of, analysis, goal-setting, and plan development, implementation, and four, the mid-cycle goals review, which is where we are. In last March, the school committee approved the goals and the plan, and approved a two-year cycle for the goals and the plan, and also set forth a schedule for a mid-cycle review this fall, and a final review, what's called the summative evaluation, next fall. So we are in the mid-cycle review. The superintendent will run through it briefly on what we're doing. I will tell you what the mid-cycle review is for us, is the superintendent provides us with a progress report with respect to the goals that were set by, approved by the school committee last March. You'll get those reports, you have those reports tonight. And then the superintendent and the school committee will review that, that progress report at a public meeting, which will be our next meeting on November 23rd. The purpose of that review by the school committee and the superintendent is to share relevant feedback, develop a clear understanding of the progress being made on each goal, and achieve agreement on what, if any, mid-course adjustments may be needed. And so with that, I will turn it over to the superintendent for a brief review of, of the status of the mid-cycle review.
I think you eloquently summarized what I was going to say.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, as Mr. Walker would say. So, very briefly, Chairman Zulus articulated the cycle, but this is a visual reinforcement of the cycle, and I think it's important for the viewing public and the community to understand that I use the same process that our teachers are evaluated by. And so this is a five-step cycle. Again, Glenn, if you would go to the next, we're in the formative. And as Chairman Zulus read to you, what this stage requires is for the superintendent to produce to you a progress report. So I have, there is a folder at your seat, a blue folder, that I will email out to you tomorrow with a progress report of the goals that you voted, that I collaborated with Leroy Walker regarding last year, and you approve them. Next, I want to put this in the context, because I think it was confusing last year, that when we get to the end of cycles, this is a very thorough process. There are two parts to the process. One, the goals that have established, that's step one. And now you're going to have a mid-cycle opportunity for us to gauge my progress report of how we're achieving the professional practice goals, the student learning goals, and the district improvement goals. That would be step one. Step two, if, for those of you who are on the committee, and for all of you, I'll send you email and this information, there are over 40 rubrics that you're going to be asked in my final evaluation to evaluate me on four standards, instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement, and professional culture. That would be step two. That's part of the final process. I'll, I'll email that to you tomorrow, so new members might have a feel of what they'll be asked in the final evaluation, evaluating the superintendent, and that's step two. I outlined in this next slide what Chairman Zulus clearly articulated to you, when the goals were voted by you, what the requirement of the process is, and going forward, I've sent, given you, and I will email you, my progress report, and we'll come back to this table for you to, under the direction of Chairman Zulus, ask me any questions if we want to adjust any of the goals, add, delete, tweak any of the goals. This, from the literature, would be the time to do that. would be the time to do that. And then, attached to this freestanding PowerPoint that will be on the web tomorrow, I have one more time articulated the goals, the student learning goals, the district improvement goals, the professional practice goal that you, the school committee voted and approved last May. So, thank you. And next to your seat, a blue folder will be a copy of the progress report, and I'll email it to you tomorrow, which might be, be the vehicle you want to review. So, thank you, Chairman Zulus.
Just so it's clear to the members, that, that page called End of Cycle Evaluation, with all the different rubrics and all the different evaluations, that's, that will be for next fall. Right now, we're just doing the mid-cycle, mid-cycle review, so. Next on the agenda, and try, try to keep this brief, and that is just an update on the Board of Selectmen meeting that occurred last evening, at which the five-year financial forecast created by an administrative team comprised of the town administrator, the town accountant, and the Assistant Superintendent of Business was created. Excuse me. It was a Board of Selectmen meeting, Board of Selectmen meeting that was attended by myself and Mr. Walker and Ms. Pedera, Superintendent Gormley, and certainly as well, the Assistant Superintendent Pavlicek, who was one of the primary speakers. Just a brief update, the, the administrative team prepared two budgets, one which was called a needs-based budget, which was the budget forecast that, that we approved, that included the forecast that we approved last January, that was, was described as a level service necessary to meet the needs of residents. And second, a second budget called an inflation-based level-dollar budget was prepared, which included salary wage increases and certain percentage increases for expenditures. The primary findings, at least in my view, were that, under the needs-based budget, which is the level service budget necessary to meet the needs of residents of this town, without an override, for FY '17, which is our next fiscal year, there will be a deficit of nearly $4 million. If you assume that the school budget is half of that, then that might be up to $2 million in cuts for the schools, that's without an override. After five years, if there is no override, that deficit balloons to about $32 million. With respect to the inflation-based level-dollar budget, and that again does not include all the needs identified by the different departments in town, that would result, without an override, in a deficit in FY '17 of $1.1 million, which, if you assume the schools are half the budget, that would be approximately $550,000. After five years without an override, that deficit balloons to $20 million. So, certainly, it was a sobering evening. I will say that the, there were inquiries made with respect to schools from the Chair of the Board of Selectmen and the Chair of the Warrant Committee about tuition, tuition-free full-day kindergarten. That was raised by both the Chair of the Board of Selectmen and the Chair of the Warrant Committee, and I don't know if anyone else has anything to add, but that's, that's where we stand after last night. Moving on, Finance Subcommittee Report.
If I could interject for just a second?
Yes.
I just think it's important to point out, for the viewing public, that those numbers, the $31 and $20 million, those are collective, it appears they're collective summative five-year deficit.
That, those are, that's the, that's the aggregate deficit after five years without an override, that's correct.
That's not the projected operational defect, or deficit in, in five fiscal years.
Right, that's an accumulated deficit, that's right, that's right. Finance Subcommittee Report.
First quarter report you actually received previously, we wanted to make one adjustment in the cover memo, which was to make clear that a deficit that we might be projecting in the special ed area, special ed area, we do have a strategy for addressing that. Dr. Pavlicek will get that memo out tomorrow, but I am going to move that we approve the first quarter report that you've previously received.
Second. Motion for approval of the first quarter report has been made, and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? Genanamous.
Approval of vendor warrants, Dr. Pavlicek, date, amount, and number?
Warrant 19, dated November 5th, 2015, is in the amount of $164,412.27.
Twenty-seven cents?
Yes.
Move approval of vendor warrant number 19 dated November 15th in the amount of
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? Genanamous. And that ends the Finance Subcommittee.
Policy Subcommittee?
I have a question.
Oh, Ms. Bagley-Jones.
Finance Subcommittee, I have the wonderful experience of going to a Finance Subcommittee, and I appreciate it being there, and I was wondering, do we know yet when they're actually going to be each week? And is there any flexibility in the day? I know there's no flexibility in the time, but is there any flexibility to have it at 9 o'clock on a Thursday or Friday? I just think with an override coming, I'd really like to be going to more of them if I could.
So, at present, the next meeting is scheduled for Monday, the 9th, at 1:00, and then after that, we'll be back to Mondays at 9:00.
And it's, it has to stay Monday at 9:00? There's no other?
I am losing my hair trying to schedule these meetings, so, yes, for now, that's the date that seems to be working, so we're going to stick with that.
Okay, if that ever changes in the future, I would love to be able to come to some.
I understand.
Thursdays or Fridays at 9:00?
And just one coming attraction, since I still have the floor, thank you. So, we had planned to provide you with a list of prioritized resources, I'm sorry, priorities for the school committee to review, discuss, revise. So, what we asked the superintendent to do was, assuming a $500,000 spend, what priorities would she recommend in priority order? And assuming a $1 million spend, similar, similar list. We had planned to discuss that this evening, Ms. Pedera asked that we defer that because she wasn't going to be here. So, given our schedule, that now will require that on the 23rd, we'll present you with that list of priorities and a budget.
Wow.
Because we're moving toward the December 1st date rapidly, so. We'll get both of those out to you in advance, so you'll have some time to think about it, look and ask questions, but the discussion's going to be a little more compressed than we had previously planned.
Ms. Bagley-Jones.
So, the meetings are always posted as a full school committee meeting, correct?
Yes, Finance Subcommittee, yes.
So, if the Monday at 1, at 9:00 can't ever be changed, could there ever be, and I just think that there has to be some, or could there be minutes for, sometimes you guys have minutes that you bring that are very helpful?
Look, I, I think the more participation we have, the better. So, if you want to canvas other members and see whether there's one night, maybe we could do a night meeting, there's one night that would work for everybody, I'm happy to do it.
Okay.
Because I, I think these are some of the most important decisions we make, so I, I want everyone to be involved, but as I said, I'm, I'm dying trying to schedule these meetings.
So, a question?
Ms. Brown.
So, definitely, it's posted now for 1:00 PM on Monday?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I came to the 9 o'clock on Monday.
Yeah, I heard that. Those are always posted as full school committee meetings.
Okay, okay, cool, thanks.
But if, if, maybe the following week, Kristen, if you want to see if we can find a night that works for people, 5 o'clock, 6 o'clock, 7 o'clock, happy to do it.
Thank you, that would be helpful.
Yeah.
Could be really helpful.
Give my mic just one more note. The Finance Subcommittee does an outstanding job on minutes, approving the minutes.
Sorry.
And certainly, anything can be relayed at our meeting that happens, can be relayed orally as well.
Right.
So, it doesn't need to necessarily be in minutes, I mean, the members of the committee can talk about what they discussed at that meeting, so.
But I, I think what I'm hearing from Ms. Bagley-Jones and Ms. Varela is they, they'd like to be involved in the discussion that generates the recommendation, so I, we'll do it.
They can do that, and also, we can have a discussion here as well, you know, I mean, it certainly helps if you can make the meeting, those prior meetings, and have an initial discussion and then a secondary discussion here, but it doesn't prevent us from having a, a fully developed discussion here as well.
And the minutes don't come to us, school committee? Because sometimes we've had minutes, and now I've.
Those are, those are all posted, they're posted, as, when they're approved, they're posted.
But I mean, when you do your Finance Subcommittee report, can you hand out your minutes that have been approved by you?
Well, I guess you.
I've done that with Health and Wellness in the past, not lately, but I have in the past, just to give you the.
Yeah, I'm happy to do it, I don't think that's going to get you what you're looking for.
No, it's not, but it, it helps give a, so, thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, if, if, given that, on the 23rd, if we could try to make room for a fairly robust discussion.
Right, which is, which is going to make what I next, what I next suggest maybe unworkable, or maybe we can defer it till after the 23rd. Given the hour and given the fact that we have individuals here to participate in our executive session, what I'd like to do, if there's no objection, is to defer the next two items, including the Policy Subcommittee report, unless there's objection from the Policy Subcommittee, in the approval of minutes, and then to take that up if we can't do it on the 23rd, at the next meeting after that. I think, I think the, the items that we need to discuss in executive session and the budget are a tad more pressing than, than those two items, unless I'm told differently.
Excellent idea.
No objection.
Okay, so those two items, items 7 and 8 will be deferred. Any, I don't believe there's any old business, Citizen Speak topic response, next meeting agenda items, our NPEG studio is completed and ready for us to have our first meeting there, or a meeting there, to try it. They want us to do it, and so if there's no objection, we'll have our meeting on the 23rd at our brand-spanking-new studio, which is here at the high school, I think it's room 241, 240, something like that?
I don't know the room number, I'll get it published.
So, I remember, I'm sorry, but I, I remember asking, when that idea was positive, would there be some discussion of whether we wanted that to be our meeting place, and you said yes. So, I'd like to have that discussion before we meet there, because I, I, I don't want to meet there.
Okay.
Second.
All right, so.
And no offense.
I'm happy to do a tour, but I don't want to meet there.
Right.
I like this layout, and unless it's a lot better than I think, including with windows and so on, I'm.
So, there's objection to trying it at the next meeting and seeing?
Yes.
There is objection.
I would be, I would object to that.
All right, so, so I guess we should, I guess we should see if the other members feel the same way. The idea is, the idea is whether we, I know it's certainly, the Milton Cable Access prefers us to meet there, that doesn't compel us to, certainly. If we do it at the next meeting, we could try it and see how it works, and then we can come back here in the next meeting, or we could stay here and just do it the way we've been doing it. So, I guess my preference would be to try it at the next meeting and see how it works. They tell us it's a great layout with better, better sound, better visuals, all better bells and whistles, so, so I'd like to try it, but, but it's certainly the will of the committee.
Yeah.
Ms. Varela.
So, I, I don't mind, I personally don't mind trying it, I just, the questions I had were, is it, before we try it, I would just want it to be like well-publicized to the community for Citizen Speak and all those other things that, you know, it's moved from the library down to there. I don't know how well that would be promoted, and I also, I kind of didn't, when we took the tour of it, I, I wondered how that would be set up for Citizen Speak and, because it's a, because it's a TV studio, whether people can come in and out in Citizen Speaks like they can now, so, I mean, when I saw the setup, I'm like, oh, okay, I can see how this would be set up, but I didn't think about all the other people that attend and Citizen Speak, and I just want to make sure all those issues are addressed and that it's well-informed and publicized before we try it, but I'm not totally opposed to it. I don't think we should maybe use it for every meeting, but, but on certain ones, I'd be willing to definitely try it.
We certainly have two and a half weeks to publicize it. My understanding is, and I'm not an expert on this, but my understanding is that the layout would be, would be set up at the front of the studio just like this, and there would be chairs just like that near the door. So, that's my understanding of the setup, and I can, you know, you can correct me if I'm wrong, anyone from the administration, but that's my understanding of what the setup would be. Ms. Bagley-Jones.
What I would say is that it would be great to have a meeting there to showcase it, because it is a wonderful thing, a wonderful partnership, it is great, the resources they have given there, but I feel exactly the same phrase Mr. Walker does, is, I love the library, I love being here, I just think it's beautiful jewel of our school system, and I just think it's appropriate for the school committee to be here, but that's just my opinion, but I would be willing to, to showcase it and go to a meeting there.
Okay, so do we want to showcase it on the 23rd? And that's the, that's the, that's the question. I'm, I'd be happy to do that if, again, if it's the will of the committee, and Dr. Donahue, I don't know if you have a thought about that one.
I guess my only question would be, what's, what is the institutional memory of this board? Do our conversations regarding budgets and potential override priorities tend to generate increased attention to Citizen Speak? Are we expecting a larger crowd than usual?
Yes.
If so, maybe that meeting wouldn't, wouldn't be the most, wouldn't be the best one to do it with a new seating plan, maybe the, the week after, but I will, I'm somewhat agnostic on the subject.
Yeah, that, just to, if I can, just to echo Dr. Donahue, that's what I feel, especially with this year, I just, I, I definitely want to try it, but I just want to make sure everyone gets there for Citizen Speak. This is a, an important year, like, there will be more attendance, depending on how things go, and I just want to make sure that the community at large, you know, knows to go, that there's, that there's enough space, there's enough availability, all that stuff. I mean, and if, if there is, that's fine, so, as long as that's well-prepared by Milton Access Cable and all that, then I'm willing to try it.
Well, I, I understand, they tell us it is, so, I, and it may be better to do it at the next meeting rather than some of the later meetings that may be more well-attended.
Yes.
So.
It's true, to, to assess it, yes.
Yeah, so, 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 so then, if there is some appetite for doing it on the 23rd, I guess we should move to do it, so I'll make a motion that we have our next meeting at the new NPEG studio at the high school. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Of trying it next time.
Trying it just the 23rd, we're not going to, and opposed, and it is four to one. So, our next meeting on November 23rd will be at the new NPEG studio at the high school, room 240, I believe, but anyway, it'll be well-publicized on Twitter, Facebook, blogs, everything you could want.
Signs.
And we're, signs, and so we'll, so we'll try it on the 23rd. I, I have a motion to adjourn for the purpose of, the purpose of going into executive session, not to return to open session, for the purpose of discussion, discussing collective bargaining, the discussion of which an open session would be detrimental to the negotiations. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Voice vote, Ms. Varela?
Yes.
Ms. Bagley-Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus, yes, Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Dr. Donahue?
Yes.
We are adjourned, we will.